Welcome, Daily City, to our regular meeting for Recreation Commission, Tuesday, February 28, 2023. For public participation, to submit a comment in writing, please visit www.dailycity.org/Agendas and complete the public comment form. To speak at the meetings in person, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the City Council chambers and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. And we move to the call to order. Denise? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm mistaken. Call to order with roll call, my bad. So, yeah, we'll move to, we'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Denise, roll call. My bad about that.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Couture?
Here.
Vice Chair Luna?
Here.
And Chair Ortiz?
Here.
And Commissioner Hamilton Anoy?
Awesome. So, for approval of the agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to put a motion to approve last week's agenda, or last month's agenda, or minutes? Oh, sorry.
We're on this week's agenda.
Agenda.
Cool. Can I get a second?
Aye.
We got a second right here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cool. And then approving of the minutes, can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to motion to approve January 24 minutes.
Cool. And can I get a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to public comment. Do we have anything for today? No cards, no? Okay, cool. All right, moving on. Director's report?
Thank you, Chair Ortiz. The first topic is the Brown Act training by our city attorney, Rose Zimmerman.
Thank you, Denise. I think we can use a PowerPoint. There you go. So, does this move it? This one? On the side of the clicker. On the side of the clicker, sorry. Where is it? And this clicks it here? Ah, nice, okay. So, thank you. So, for those of you who don't know me, I'm sure you've seen me. I'm the city attorney. I've been here for about 22 years now. I oftentimes are with the city council and most of the time with a lot of the boards and commissions. So, we try to have counsel at some of these events. So, I'm doing really just an overview. This is not intended to be a training necessarily. And some of the stuff that we're going to go through through the slides are probably things you already know, are aware. So, this is really intended to be a very informal presentation. And if you have any questions down the line, concerns, feel free to ask any questions. So, we'll get started. So, the Brown Act. The Brown Act was enacted in 1953. And essentially, just to give you sort of an overview, the purpose of the Brown Act was to promote transparency and public participation in local government. And it was really intended so that all legislative bodies, commissions, any public government was allowed to have any meetings, any items to be discussed in public, unless there was to be any kind of exemptions to that. And there's a whole host of exemptions. And a lot of them really deal with litigation personnel matters that we would also still have to agendize. But because you sit here as a commissioner, you're all subject to the Brown Act. And we'll go through, you did a great job in making your motions, and that's part of it when we make these items and decisions. Okay. Who is subject to the Brown Act? Like we mentioned, the city council, boards, commissions, school boards, boards of supervisors, and bodies that are created by the city council. So, the city council does appoint, I think we have about six or seven commissions for the city of Daly City, the Recreation Commission being one of them. The Recreation Commission is actually created by the education code, which allows for the city council to appoint a recreation commission to deal with recreational matters that deal with the city of Daly City and the local entities. As a commission, you're appointed and you sit as a body, as you are aware of that. You do not sit as individuals. So, any items, actions, even if you were to vote no on an item, if a majority of the board were to vote on it, your actions as one body is what's important. And that's what the Brown Act is essentially all about. This is just a brief. You are aware that the municipal code creates the recreation commissions and the powers and duties that come before you. You usually have a staff liaison, and I believe it's Denise, who will put the items before you. And most of these are dealing with recreational items, budgetary items, input from the community, any type of recreational issues or programs, I believe, come before the Recreation Commission. And you serve a pivotal point because you do act as advisory to the city council, and that's why they have appointed you here. This is important because the Brown Act really comes into play because you vote on matters within your subject matter jurisdiction, and your subject matter is recreation. So, for instance, if you probably have sat through a city council meeting, if items that have nothing to do with the Recreation Commission come before this board, that is not, you're not subject to those items or to make comments. You can make general comments, but they wouldn't mean anything as a commission. The big part of this, why you're subject to the Brown Act, is you have regular meetings. Regular meetings, I know, are the fourth Tuesday at 7:00 PM of every month, unless there is a special meeting. And a special meeting really is, sometimes you might have a meeting outside of your regular meeting, and that may be like a study session or another item. You would still have to agendize that, but it wouldn't be outside of the scope of a regular meeting. Agendas are prepared, again, by your liaison here, and then we talk about what is a meeting. So, a meeting is a gathering in a majority of members of the legislative body. There's five members of the Recreation Commission. So, anytime you have three or more members, you now have a meeting if you're going to be discussing items that deal with the Recreation Commission. It's when you hear, discuss, and deliberate any subject matter. We have a quorum. We have a quorum today because you have three or more commissioners, and that makes you subject to the Brown Act. But I wanted to sort of get through a little bit. I know this is a small print, but you do have a slide. And feel free to jump in. I know I'm kind of like just going through the slides here. So, the big thing that comes into play when we talk about the Brown Act as a public meeting and that you act as a body. So, in a very traditional sense, this is a meeting. We've agendized it. We've noticed it. We have members of the public who can speak. There are three or more, and we may have items that may be presented by your staff liaison, and you will maybe vote on these items. But you may have these instances where you have less traditional perception of what a meeting is. And sometimes you might have an informal gathering, a social gathering, or even having lunch, and there's three or more commissioners. Now, three or more commissioners that talk about items that possibly can come before the Recreation Commission can be subject to a meeting, and therefore, the Brown Act would come into play. Sometimes we're not aware of it, but in the times that we have media communications, email, Facebook, Snapchat, text messages, all of these, whenever there are three or more of the commissioners that start to dialogue or discuss perhaps an item, maybe Denise brought up in a group chat, I don't know. It might be a recreational. That can be considered a meeting. And not a very, you know, with the age of text messaging, a lot of times people think that if we're texting each other and we be talking about an item and we're talking one-on-one, and then that message gets forwarded over to another person that's a commissioner, and you're talking about the same thing, trying to get a consensus, that can also be considered a meeting, which means that the several requirements of the Brown Act would come into play. The one thing that, I don't see it as often, but we used to see this a lot, are serial meetings. And a serial meeting is, for instance, Commissioner Couture talks to Denise, and Vice Chair Luna also talks to Denise, and they're talking individually. But now Denise goes over and talks over to the chair and says, "We're all voting yes on this facility for the Recreation Commission." That's considered a serial meeting because now you're using, Denise, sorry Denise, we're using Denise to try to get a consensus. And that's one of the big things that people are mainly concerned about, especially with emails and text messaging and media communications. And the times where we were also through Zoom and chatting, you know, those dialogues are considered parts of a meeting when you start to dialogue about these issues because we have so many different means of communications and can be challenged, essentially. So, and another one that comes into play is, we see this oftentimes in the Planning Commission, where you take a field trip, and maybe three or more of the commissioners come. They just want to take a look at maybe an item that you're going to be voting on or a budgetary item that maybe is involving the Recreation Commission, but you start to talk about it. And people see you. Maybe you didn't really intend to have a meeting, but that's a meeting because now you're all gathering together to come to some consensus on possibly something that would be coming for the, before the Recreation Commission. Exceptions. I don't want you to think that now that you're on this commission, you cannot hang out with each other or anything like that. So, you can have gatherings and conferences that are open to the public and not discuss items. And a lot of times, when you're put on a commission, it's really about perception. It's really about like, what do you, you know, now you've got three people, or you guys could be conspiring on something, and you might see that in the media, or you might see it in the paper. But like, other public meetings, like attending a council meeting, that's fine. Purely social ceremonial occasions with three or more of you, that's also fine. And open meetings with other legislative bodies, it's okay, as long as you're not discussing items that you're possibly going to be voting on. You're not subject to the Brown Act. When you have a meeting such as this, this is a regular meeting, your agenda is required to be posted 72 hours in advance. When you have a special meeting, you also have to notice it, but you only need 24 hours advanced notice because it's not a regular meeting. And in some instances, which most of the time would involve the city council, you can have an emergency meeting, and that would be one hour before a meeting. And those are real dire emergencies. You have to give media notification, and you also have to give notice at the same time that the meeting is occurring to the media so that members of the public would be aware of it. Are there any questions? Yes, go ahead.
So, in regards to the serial meeting?
Yes.
Does that still, so with the serial meeting and the staff liaison, what if it's a constituent that plays that role, for instance, where we are speaking to a constituent?
Oh, yes, you can still have a meeting because if all three of you start to tell, like, that constituent starts to tell somebody else.
Right.
That you're going to vote on something, it doesn't matter if it's your staff liaison or not. That can still be considered a meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, what's required? Physical posting. Again, because this is an open and transparent, the decisions you make, the discussions you have on any items that come before the Recreation Commission, we want to have the public access to it. Here, the physical location is City Hall. Where the depository is the city clerk's office. But when you do have a city website, you are required to post all of the agendas and any backup materials that you might have also on the city website. So, we do have a city website, so everything should be posted on there. Right? Yeah. Okay. Basic rules for the regular meetings on agenda, as you see in your agendas, the agenda needs to contain a brief general description of what you're going to be discussing or voting on at that meeting. And that is really to allow for the members of the public to be able to speak on an item before you are to vote on it. So, for instance, this presentation, you're not voting on the Brown Act. So, you might not necessarily have, you don't have a requirement that people have to come and speak before I speak about the Brown Act because you're not, you're not voting on that. It's really voting matters that have, that require that general description. You may have instances in the public comment period where there may be people discussing. And for this commission, public comment periods can only be public comments that you have jurisdiction over. So, if you're a Recreation Commission and everybody wants to talk about recreation facilities, that's great. But if they want to talk about how they feel about other people or how they feel about the city council, and you've seen that in some of our meetings, you don't have jurisdiction over that. You can stop that, and the chair can control that to have decorum and order in the meeting. If you do have comments from a public comment period, the legislative body can ask questions but not vote on it, can ask for clarification, and possibly can even direct staff to even maybe take a look further into that matter. So, if somebody has an interest in something that possibly you might have jurisdiction over, you can definitely inquire about it and ask further questions to see if we can agendize it at a future meeting. Yes.
So, let's say if it's a public comment that's off-topic and for the better of the meeting, it's better that I just cut them off at that moment and figure out where that would belong versus?
Yes. I think, you know, most of the time, you know, again, we like the chair, like, the chair is tasked with having decorum and order in the meeting because as commissioners, you want to conduct business. But we also want to allow the public to have an opportunity to speak. And, you know, like, you notice that we usually, I think you allowed two minutes? Do you allow two minutes for a public comment here? That's pretty much the standard. There may be instances where the chair can change that. For instance, you have a full room of people probably speaking about the same thing, and you want to do one minute, as long as it's equal across the board, not one minute to one and two minutes to another, you should be okay. I usually say politely, "Okay, that sounds to me that's kind of outside of the scope of this, and stop it," you know, and hopefully, hopefully that helps. Or perhaps it may be a topic that can be better addressed to the city council. And that, that can help. I mean, in instances where maybe you have one comment, I guess you can probably take it, but know that we don't really have any jurisdiction over that. One of the big things when you're talking about the Brown Act is the public access. So, the public is entitled to all of the agenda packets, documents, any backup documents you have that are not deemed confidential. So, under the Public Records Act, they can request any of this. As long as it's presented to the public, they are entitled to it. However, there may be instances where you might have some notes on it, and, you know, that necessarily is not confidential. We have had instances where your notes that you may be discussing in a public meeting may be subject to the Public Records Act and may be allowed. We've also had instances where people are texting each other during the meeting, and members of the public may find out that they are and can request the text messages as well. That's always been sort of a dicey little topic because people think, "I'm texting on my personal phone." But to the extent that it's business-related in a public meeting, people can request that. There has been instances where people have definitely requested text messages during a meeting. So, we talk about basically, on an agenda, you can only talk about items that are on the agenda. However, there may be instances that you might have to add to an agenda. And there are very, very specific instances when that can occur, and it requires a four-fifths vote of the entire commission, so four members of the commission. And the reason being is because the public is not aware of what you're going to be adding on the agenda. So, we want to make sure that it's important and specific. And that's usually in an emergency. Or there's an item that maybe you weren't aware of that needs to be voted on today, and maybe you didn't know about it during the notice requirement. You have to state this on the record. It has to be part of the motion and before. And then continued items, as long as it's an item from a previous meeting that's continued to the next one if it didn't make the agenda, you've advised people of that in the previous meeting. We can add that on the agenda. But it's very rare that I've seen people add. Most of the time, I've seen instances where there might be an item that requires immediate action. Maybe there's a grant funding that you didn't know about, and maybe there's a deadline and you won't have a meeting in time. So, that might be pretty valid for you to add it on the agenda. And again, the Brown Act is just because we want members of the public to know ahead of time, like I said, 72 hours in advance, that you're voting on these items. Yeah.
So, in this case, if there's four in the meeting?
Yes.
I would need unanimous?
You need unanimous to add to it. Yeah, it's a four-fifths vote to add to it. Again, like I mentioned, it's because the intent is the public didn't know about it, 72 hours in advance. So, we want to make sure all of you are okay with that. So, members of the public are allowed to record and film your meetings as long as they're not disrupting the meeting. And that gets tricky. And when I say disrupting the meeting, it's like, I mean, you're dead smack in the middle, and I can't conduct a meeting because you're filming me and you're being disruptive. And that's what I mean. I mean, and use, most of the time, I don't think we get that in the chambers. And again, it's against the chair that hopefully just creates order in the meeting. We're not trying to, we're not trying to stop speech or anything like that. We just want to make sure we can have a meeting. Any tape can be accessible to the public. We usually, it has to be retained for 30 days. If people request it, they can inspect the tape. It's a lot easier now. I know when we were doing remote, we had YouTube. So, it was a lot easier for people to just get links to YouTube when they needed to. But I think as we get back to live and we're going by tape, I think people would rather just inspect it, or sometimes we'd make a DVD. Okay, we talked about when people can speak. They can speak before any item is voted on. And also, we talked about the public comment period. Again, the public comment period is just, it's sort of the open mic, open mic portion of the agenda, but only within the subject matter of recreation for your commission. Conduct of the meeting is key when you're having a meeting, especially when you have a volatile meeting. Everybody wants to speak. The chair, who's nominated as chair, is responsible for assuring order and decorum in the meeting to allow for members of the public to speak as well as their peers on the commission. We adopt Robert's Rules of Order, which is the parliamentarian rules of making motions, having order, but it's not the law. Oftentimes, people think that Robert's Rules of Order is not the law. It's really just a guidance for us. So, if you made a motion and it was less than perfect, but it really was a motion, it doesn't mean you didn't make a motion. That's really what I'm trying to say here. It's the Brown Act that's the law. If you made a motion behind closed doors, then yes, then you're in violation of the law. The big part of what you do are the motions because this is the manner in which you vote. Motions require a second, as you're well aware. You can have a roll call vote as well as a voice vote. Common motions are motions to continue, motions on items for approval. Now, one key thing to note is, for instance, if you have a motion to continue an item or you're voting on an item that just needs a regular quorum, if there are only three commissioners present, you can have that motion pass with just two because it's the majority. If there are instances, and I don't know if this happens in this commission where you're going to vote on a resolution, and a resolution is a more formal action because it's a piece of paper, it has whereas's, and it has findings, you need three affirmative votes. So, for instance, if only three members of the commission are present, in order for a resolution to pass, you need a unanimous three to have a resolution pass as opposed to just a motion to continue, you just need a majority of who's present. So, you won't, and I don't believe you adopt ordinances, but it's the same with ordinances. You need three affirmative votes. So, you need all three people present in order for it to pass. Oh, go ahead. Sure.
Would there also be a motion to delay a vote?
You can do a motion to delay a vote.
And what circumstance? Like, for example, if I felt like there wasn't enough information given?
Yes. Yes, you can table a motion. And again, like, table a motion means it doesn't, it goes indefinitely. I mean, start to get really kind of deep into parliamentarian rules, but yes, you can do that where you want to like delay it. You can call the question. That we've had situations where you're having a heated debate, and you're going on and on and on, and the chair says, "Oh, let's call the question. Let's go to a vote." That's parliamentarian rules. And in those types of motions, those are only a majority vote. You might have instances, and I've seen this before, where one abstains. So, if there's an abstention on there, that doesn't count as a person. So, you really only count the three because that person who has abstained is no longer present, even if they're sitting there.
And that would be just for that vote, right?
That would be just for that vote, unless they want to abstain for the whole thing. Yeah. That's kind of like the wrap-up, but I just thought I'd kind of give you sort of the penalties and remedies. So, it's very, there's the civil remedies and the criminal penalties. Criminal penalties are very rare. I've not seen that in my 22 years of being here that someone's gone to jail for the Brown Act violations. I mean, those are very, they're personal, whereas civil remedies are the body that would be responsible. Criminal liabilities can be misdemeanors, and those are like very willful and knowing. Like, you know you cannot vote behind closed doors, but you're doing it at every meeting. That's how I would look at it. The more traditional remedies are the civil remedies. So, any member of the public, any interested party, can file a lawsuit that there's a violation of the Brown Act. But it's the body that would be a violation of the Brown Act. So, if you voted no on it, it would still be the Recreation Commission that would be subject to the Brown Act violation. In that instance, it means, most of the time, this is what I've seen here, is you voted on something, maybe you didn't know you should have voted on it. What the courts usually do is you notice it and you agendize it, and you let members of the public, and you vote on it again. If it's an item, and this usually happens with the city council because they are final in most of their decisions, and maybe it involves a land use decision, if there's a Brown Act violation, that legal action can be voided as if it didn't happen. They can overturn it. The courts can overturn it. And of course, if there are any interested parties that sue the city or the Recreation Commission or even individuals, and they prevail, the city would have to pay for costs and attorney's fees awarded for them to get us to overturn a decision. These are some resources. Again, Robert's Rules of Order is a very thick book. It's fun reading, I think. It's kind of cool. And then there's some other things there. And that's pretty much it. So are there any questions or anything? Yeah, quick and easy. Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Okay.
So the next item that we have on the agenda is the aquatics area with Brian Sai, Chris Mariano, and then Romeo Benson in the background, providing you an overview of the aquatics area and where they've come and where they're going. So I'm just going to turn it over to Brian.
Hello. Hi, my name is Brian. I'm the Recreation Coordinator at War Memorial and Aquatics. Today I'll be presenting about aquatics. So aquatics is held at Gemona Pool, which is located at Westmore High School. These are our current programs, Aqua Fit, lap swim, swim, swimming lessons and pool parties. So Aqua Fit is basically, I'll go over it during each slide. So Aqua Fit is basically water aerobics. We hold those on Saturdays, eight to nine AM. Residents are six dollars, non residents are seven dollars, and it's a instructor-led water aerobics class. We have up to sixteen participants and no swimming experiences is needed. This is the video. So our instructors are also participating in.
There we go, a little more pep, a little more.
That is our squad. But yeah, our instructors get to know our community better while they lead the class as well. Okay, this is our lap swim program. This program is for individuals that would like to exercise or train and swim. So we hold those on Monday to Thursday, six AM to seven thirty AM and eight o'clock to eight thirty PM. Saturday and Sundays, seven o'clock. I made a mistake on that, it's supposed to be eleven o'clock, my apologies. Residents, six dollars, non residents is seven dollars. And it's one swimmer per lane and it's thirty minutes per time slot. Swimming lessons, so we hold those of Monday and Monday, Wednesday classes, six o'clock to eight o'clock PM. Tuesday, Thursday, six o'clock to eight o'clock PM as well. Saturday, nine thirty AM to twelve o'clock PM. And Sunday, nine thirty to eleven forty five AM. I'm going to say eleven thirty AM, yes. So for swimming lessons, we basically cater to all ages in the community, from toddlers to seniors. Residents are eighty dollars and non residents are ninety five dollars. It's a one instructor to six students ratio, and like I said, it's all ages, pretty much. And those are pictures of our instructors teaching our, teaching their students. Pool parties, we currently have them on Saturdays, twelve thirty to three thirty, so it's a three hour period, up to fifty participants. And if you would like more information, you could give us a call, Daily City Recreation Main Office, six five zero nine nine one eight zero zero one. So as spring is coming up, we're going to have some changes and additions. So Recreation Swim is going to be coming back. It's returning on Saturday, April eighth. Pool Parties reservation time will be pushed back to three o'clock to six o'clock PM. Lessons, swimming lessons, we'll be resuming ducklings and starfish. So we took those out during, after the pandemic hit. So that's our three to five year old classes. And the lifeguard course is coming up in the spring as well. So more information about the Recreation Swim. Recreation Swim is basically a program for our community and their families to have fun. We provide noodles, donuts, the floating donuts, not real donuts, and a basketball hoop as well. So as I said before, reopening on April eighth, it will be occurring every Saturday, twelve thirty to two thirty PM. Residents will be six dollars, non residents will be seven dollars. And we will be maxing it up to out to fifty participants. All participants, all participants can be, can participate. However, if you're under the age of thirteen, you have to be accompanied by a parent at the pool. We're holding the blended lifeguard course in the spring from April third to April fifth, nine AM to four PM. So those three days will be nine AM to four PM. There's an online portion that the participants will have to complete prior to the physical portion. And we provide the digital copy of the lifeguard manual so that they could complete it. In person, in person portion is the lifeguard saves and CPR and first aid. The participants must be fifteen years of age by the time the student takes the in-person tests. So they could be fourteen when they first start, but then by the time that they have to take the test, they have to be fifteen. Summer changes and additions, Recreation Swim will, we will have many more days of those. Aqua Fit, we will also increase the available days, lessons. We will have more AM lessons throughout the weekdays and also PM classes. And we will also hold a summer lifeguard course. So the job readiness workshop, I'm jumping ahead, but because we host, we hope, we have interns at the pool, we get the interns from the job readiness workshop, which I also run. So it is aligned to have the interns complete their internship before they can take the lifeguard course. So basically, after they're done with their internship, and if they want to apply to our pool, they can take the lifeguard course right after.
The Job Readiness Workshop is a program that teaches the students how to respond to interview questions by giving them a foundation to work off from. We provide short lectures, interactive and group activities, techniques and methods to answer questions and to prepare for an interview. Our goal is to teach our students what the interviewer's goal is and how to answer questions confidently.
I was really interested in the program because I knew how much it would help me in the future because I'm headed to college soon. So just like being able to have all these things that they're teaching us already in my head, it makes it much easier when I'm more independent.
One skill I learned from the Job Readiness Workshop was how to be a good worker, not just physically, but mentally.
My favorite memory was definitely our mock interviews. It was a lot of fun and I think it really helped ease me for the actual interview. It made me feel a little bit less nervous about it.
I really started out as an introvert and I feel like I've definitely stepped out of my comfort zone. Everyone was just really welcoming and that really helped me take on new challenges and just really have a drive to improve myself.
My favorite memory is probably experiencing how to do resumes and cover letters. We had to do like examples of it and it really helped me to do my interview.
I think I was selected as an intern because of my talkative attitude. I liked to go to different people and talk to them about different ideas and I was very social with people.
My favorite memory was hanging out and communicating with everyone in the office. I liked the environment there and it was like really positive.
One thing that my mentor taught me that was very helpful was understanding to communicate better with everybody because it does not work well if most people aren't communicating with each other.
My mentor, Leslie, she would have me do different activities and like have helping with certain planning events, go to different contractors and understand different parts of the workplace.
I would definitely recommend this program to future students because it really puts you out there as someone in your community who wants to step up and be a leader. And it also just looks really good in terms of like resumes. It's really nice to show that you're being there for your community and showing up for the people that you care about locally.
The Job Readiness Work. So this is basically our current interns. We have Kaylee, who just finished, and then we also have Joey, who is going to be finishing up tomorrow. So they basically get an opportunity to intern at Gemona Pool. They go through, so during the internship, they'll be getting interviewed by our senior guards. And then they get to train under our staff and see what we do. So that's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you. I mean, oh, wait, hold on. Thank you, and do you have any questions?
I just have one. I'm curious, the internship, how long is that?
Well, for the, for the summer one, it's a little longer because they have a pretty much the summer to to do it. So I believe it was sixty hours after, after the program, they did sixty hours of internship. And then the most recent one, it was twenty hours because it was only like a month or so, so.
Regarding the internship, is it popular in the community? Like, do you guys?
Yeah.
Always like fill up or how's that like?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah, usually, it usually gets packed.
Nice.
Oh, last summer, I think, I think it was fifty, I think it was about fifty, and then we split them into two cohorts.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's awesome. And going back to the lap swim?
Mm hmm.
What's the capacity like? How many folks can you get in there?
How many what?
How many people can participate?
So currently, we have one person per lane.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, is it pretty busy in the morning?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, when I swim, there's, all lanes are filled at six o'clock, seven thirty. And then there was only like two available spots at seven o'clock today.
I guess same question for Recreation Swim because, yeah, it's a little, I know that a lot of the programs and the classes are usually always filled. Recreation Swim, just noticing that it's two hours a week. And I know in the summer, you mentioned that you guys are going to, any available day, you're going to plug that in for more Recreation Swim. But does it usually get full or is it one of those like available times that there's not so many people coming in to it?
For Rec Swim? Well, I have criticized that one.
Come on.
So it is pretty much full every, so during the summer, prior, prior to COVID, we were open during the summer, Monday to.
Right, Monday to Thursday, twelve thirty to two thirty. So we'd have, what it looked like is we'd AM lessons from nine to eleven thirty. We'd have a cleanup break from eleven thirty to twelve. And from twelve thirty to two thirty, we'd have Recreation Swim to the public. And the max prior to COVID was a hundred and twenty. And we would fill up quick. Not to mention, we also had our Summer Youth Recreation Program camps that would come on a daily basis. So glad you said that we had a meeting with our SYRP supervisor today, David Zetzer. We're kind of trying to do additional planning for the summer. So.
Because yeah, if it's popular, I say, yeah, add more, add more hours as much as you can.
They'll, they'll be starting to come to the pool as well this summer. So it's, we're trying to need to go back to normal.
Yeah, we have a lot of people inquiring about the Recreation Swim because it's been gone for so long. And currently, we're just going to test it out with fifty participants.
Yeah. By any chance, is there anything that we can be supportive in, like us as a board or, you know, as a commission? Is there any way that we could be supportive, maybe in outreach or in where you guys find fit? And if not, it's totally fine. I I'm just very curious about this, as in, I I want to visit now. I firstly, I want to visit. And also, yeah, you're just kind of picking your brain in that aspect, if there's any way we could be supportive. And if not, it's totally fine.
I would say start coming around because we've, we've been open, I think, during COVID. So as you know, when COVID hit, too much into it, Gavin Newsom said, anything swimming wise was important. So we never closed.
Wow.
So, yeah, I'm more than welcome to stop by and come and check it out and check out Aqua Fit. And it's super fun. Music is blaring. People are lap swimming at the same time. In addition, you're seeing our active adults working out. And then after that's done, then we go into lessons and it's a full day of swimming. Yeah, this summer, again, we're, it looks like we're trending back to, going back to normal. And it's just a fun environment, so.
Awesome. I I have one other question. So like, I've noticed that in our community, there's a lot of senior support. And I was curious, what are like the age ranges? Or is this senior friendly in other?
It is. Majority of Aqua Fitters are are active adults.
Awesome.
And we know we'll get some that are just under fifty.
Yeah.
But majority of our active adults are are fifteen and over, so.
Cool.
Yep. And our lap swimmers in the morning, as Brian can attest, are active adults, in addition to people just swimming before work.
Awesome.
Yeah, so if you would like to register, you would go to www.dailycity.org/iplay, I P L A Y.
Thank you so much.
And just to give a little sidebar, so the job readiness component of, of what they did, had the fifty to sixty participants. And then when they broke it down into internships, that's where they had to interview into the internship program. And that was about ten to twelve individuals in the summertime. So it was a great, great job that they they did and they're continuing to do. Now they did the fall version of it and so keep going.
That just means like everyone that's in this program is essentially, we're making a pipeline into, you know, Parkland Recreation, right? If if we find those that are passionate about it in this career field, I think is every, even I know, like, participating in these like programs and internships and getting that job readiness experience early on, especially within that organization, it's, they'll find themselves moving up within Park and Rec quickly, that's for sure. I have another comment. So great point. I I really appreciate that because it had me thinking about, for instance, like for those students or those interns that participate in that career readiness. For instance, is there any like information that they could possibly intern at other locations in case they don't have a spot at Aqua Fit or or with?
Aquatics.
Thank you.
Yeah, 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 no problem.
I kind of blanked out, but because what also comes to mind is like, for instance, like you guys are preparing these, these kids, these young, these young adults. And I think, you know, for instance, if they're aiming for this, is there other options? And I'm if, I'm happy to support with more, like providing more information of other internships possibilities for them and stuff like that. It it's just, you know, if they don't go to this, maybe they have other opportunities elsewhere. I'm happy to collaborate or just kind of, you know, chat about that to see what other opportunities are open, not, not only in like the pool sector, but maybe some other stuff. But yeah.
So in the summertime, it wasn't just the aquatics area. They were in office settings in, within our department.
Yeah.
And they decided for the, this last one to make it specific to one location. But there is that opportunity to maybe not just go department, but go citywide in some capacity and see if there's opportunities in the other departments to see.
That'd be awesome.
It's, they want to grow it. So they're, I think they're doing a really good job and just keeping it slow and steady and, you know, building it up. And then on the side of what they're doing, the Summer Youth Recreation Program has a volunteer leadership program that also brings them in specific to the Summer Youth Recreation Program. So there's young people partnering with staff to learn how to be the new rec leaders and.
And I love how it's. And I love how it's like separated, right? It's not like, because then what happens oftentimes in like youth organizations, you have a volunteer program and it, it's sometimes getting muddy with the job readiness program or whatnot, right? Just because there's a lot of similarities in terms of like responsibility for the youth or whatnot. But I love how there's two separate ones because in this one, this particular job readiness one with the internship like compounded with that program, it's definitely more intensive. And it's like those, that's the type of, I mean, if you're a teen here in Daly City, that's the type of programming you need, like they're ready for it, you know?
Thanks.
So about fees. So is there a program where fees are subsidized for children or adults that are unable to, you know, afford the fees or like a scholarship? Yes?
So we have a scholarship program that is for the youth. And there was also a senior component, an active adult senior component. They would submit an application, whether they're a young person or an active adult senior, and submit the application to our admin office, and then we would review it and then contact them back. Youth get fifty percent off of the activity and it's specific to aquatics classes, Summer Youth Recreation Program. And then the active adults and seniors would get twenty-five percent off. Currently, all of our active adult and senior programming between the hours of nine and four is free at all of our locations, so there really isn't a huge amount of need for that at this time. But yeah, we do have a scholarship. We're always looking for anybody that wants to make a donation to the scholarship fund because that's where.
I was going to say, have you had to churn applicants away because of funding?
Not as of yet, no.
Great.
Thank you.
But yeah, fundraising for.
And there's no other questions, that ends the director's report.
Awesome, thank you Denise. Moving on, Commissioner's Report, anything from anybody this week? That any commissioners want to report on? I have nothing. No? None?
I do.
So I attended the walkabout. It was so early in the morning, but so well-attended. It was super fun. I was thinking in terms of like social media posts of photos, can we create a tag, like a location tag for every event? Let's say, you know, walkabout 2023 and like hashtag so that when, you know, when people start taking pictures and starting, started, start to post them, it'll go under one hashtag so they're not like misspelling the walkabout or, and we can have like all those pictures.
So I, I know I mentioned him earlier, Romeo Benson is sitting in the, in the. Thank you, in the audience. I'm like, ooh, there he is. And he oversees the marketing area, so he's taking that note. Perfect, but thank you so much for that.
Yeah, just because it's so easy. Like whenever I go to an event and then I want to post it, let's say on Facebook, I start typing in, you know, like for example, casillahan, and then it just pops up and it's the right one to be on there.
And you can also tag us at, at Daily City Rec?
Yes.
Because that's, it'll bring us back.
Yes.
That's our main one across the platform.
Cool, thank you for sharing. I think that's it. So moving on, announcements and communications, Denise?
So we have our Spring Fun Day coming up on Saturday, April eighth, from nine AM to two PM at Westlake Park. We have about five hundred little children running around, picking up eggs, playing games, having fun. So we definitely would love to see all of you, you know, come and visit us there and the community as well. Please, you know, come to see us. I'm sure it'll be a beautiful, beautiful day, no rain. And if it does rain, we always have option two inside, which we did last year. So welcome to Spring Fun Day. Thank you.
Cool, thank you. So moving on, this is the portion where we have in the agenda that says Agenda Building for next meeting. Cheryl, since you're new here, just kind of want to explain this. We kind of have this at the end of it. If there's any particular agenda items or something that you may want to add to a future meeting, I, we usually will put it in this part of the, the program. And then if it fits within the next meeting's agenda, time-wise, we'll add it. If not, we'll try to add it into a future one moving down, down the line. But that's about it for now. I don't have nothing to add. Leave it open for anybody else, but if not, I'll move, move on. Alrighty, cool. Moving on to adjourn this meeting, thank you for everybody attending, but formally, if you want to, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'd like to motion to adjourn this meeting.
Awesome, and can I get a second?
And I'll second.
Cool, I'm using the hammer today. Meeting adjourned.